Is that call wrong Gary?
Huh?
Is that call wrong?
Yeah, it's been a minute off. I got texted on my phone.
I didn't see it for the last. See that mosquito? Mosquito just flew in here.
Well, call this meeting to order. This is March the ninth. Uh, town hall meeting. Is now in session. The rise and pledge of allegiance please.
A pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. The Republic of the British Empire. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every breath.
We've got a couple gentlemen here from Clearview, or Clear, Clearwave. Clearwave.
That's what's up.
And, uh, we're gonna have, uh, public comments.
Do roll call please.
Huh?
Roll call.
Well, they gotta turn around again.
Yeah, I know, I saw that too.
Need roll call please?
Linda? Here. Jonathan King?
Yep.
Stacy Kimmel?
Here.
Leon Reber?
Here.
Martha Eads?
Here.
Mary Lance here.
Thank you sir.
But is that some-
You know, go ahead and take note of our visitors' names while I do writing. Peggy Wolling, visitor. Linda Lowry. David King. David, is it Dave or David?
David.
One of those gentlemen is Jack Trustee and his boss is-
Uh, Roth, R-O-T-H is my first name, Clayton is my last name.
And trustee with a Y, not an E-E.
Yes sir, thank you.
I used to be a trustee in our village and they would always call me trustee trustee.
What was your first name again?
Jack.
I used to go to school with the team as a trustee, are you related?
I'm sure we are, there is few of us-
Bill and Ruby was her parents-
My dad would know more of the history of all them, but-
Yeah.
I'm sure somewhere it's gotta be connected.
They lived in Cowling.
Did they?
Yeah.
Uh, would you gentlemen like to explain what you're gonna do?
Yeah.
Or what you would like to do?
Yeah, so, um-
And then we can, uh-
Yeah, we're, uh, so we're a fiber company. Right now, we have a line going between Albion and Mount Carmel. Out on, uh, on fifteen. And so, we're trying to, we have a contract with AT&T for the cell phone tower on the southeast side of town. And we've been trying to work on a path to get there and I mean, it's no, maybe even no surprise. We were trying to go down, uh, along some of, some of the Bosecker land to get there. And, uh, it kinda didn't work out, a path, um, that route was already determined. Um, I think this route probably would've made more sense to begin with of coming through Belmont. Um, just for, you know, whatever service that, that, you know, might, the city might, uh, or villagers might need. But we're ultimately wanting to get to the tower with fiber to upgrade and all the 5G things coming like that to the area for cell phones. But in the meantime, um, we're wanting to come down, which basically is the county road coming through, uh, Main, Hackberry and Church Street. All the way down, uh, so, so it's not necessarily on a city street, but obviously it's going within the, the limits. But at the time, so when we build through, the whole idea is, uh, coming through town kinda gives you guys a little more options. Uh, right now, we are a commercial, the main, the main, uh, place we provide is business. Um, business kinda plans. Um, there are, there are some talks of residential in the near future for fiber. Um, I don't know what, what is, what is here, or what do you got options you guys have here. I know a lot of times we get hit up for that, cause rural internet is, can be pretty awful around, well, all of Southern Illinois for that matter, but. So I'm thinking, having a path that comes right through the middle of town, kinda in the future, uh, the kinda the push is, well, AT&T of course is paying for some of this to get to their tower. Uh, but we're also footing a big chunk of the bill to get there. I mean, fiber isn't cheap to put in the ground. So by doing that, you know, as far as business in town or even residential in the future, is the infrastructure is already there at, at no cost to the city. Um, again, you know, Clearwave making, uh, the investment of coming through here. I mean, I don't, um, I know you guys aren't as big as Mount Carmel or, or Albion maybe, um, but that doesn't mean, you know, there aren't people that live here. That could potentially benefit off of it. Obviously, we benefit off, benefit off of it too, we wouldn't build to a tower, right? Uh, but things like that allow some of the smaller communities, um, to have access to, um, to fiber, which is, you know, pretty much the way everything's gonna go. In the future, so we're talking installation in the ground, we put conduit, so we don't direct bury anything. Um, which makes it a lot, you know, a lot more sturdy, you know, you're probably gonna hit it anywhere, our, all our minimum depths usually around three feet. Uh, obviously, people have to call Julie if they're working around it, you know, we locate our own lines. Um, but things like that keep it, you know, better secured, having the conduit in the ground. Uh, also, we have vaults, if you ever seen boxes, they lay flush with the ground. If you're familiar with a, a pad or a pedestal, they stick up maybe around three feet. So it's not, it's nothing like that, they're all, they're all flush with the ground. Um, probably looking at two to three, two by three foot boxes through town. We have a map, um, that Jack's come up with. Jack will be kind of a, really the main contact as far as engineering goes for this area. Um, but I just wanna kinda, kinda come up and talk to you guys and take, you know, take time to, uh, make sure you guys, if you had any questions. Um, further than that, but we have a proposed route, kinda to come through town, showing where we're gonna run within the right of way. And make sure we set boxes in places that we can serve people in the future, um, to the best of our ability. So, I don't know if I'm leaving anything out, um, major on that. Uh, obviously, we adhere to Julie laws, we call on Julie's when we work. Um, and if a Julie is called in, we'll, we'll locate our line, so. Um, and, you know, we're obviously gonna make a little bit of a mess when you come through. It's, it's, you know, I know some people think that, you know, it's gotta be spick and span the whole time, but obviously, if you've worked in any industry, you understand that there's a little bit of stuff, but we fix it, we're not frontier. I mean, no offense to those guys, we're not AT&T as in, and I say that as in, we're local. Our, our office, our main office is out of Harrisburg. Which means, if you have a problem, you can call directly and get to me and we can get something done. You know, if a pile of dirt's left in town, or, or a big sinkhole, or, or whatever else, you know, like stuff settles right after you work. It's just, it's just how it happens, but you're not gonna get, you know, a runaround of, well, we'll fix it, and then it never happens. Cause we're a subcontractor two states over and we don't care now that we're out of town. So we do all our own work in-house, which keeps kinda their feet to the fire that they have to, they have to answer for the work they do when they come through. So, and all directional bore, if you're familiar with that. So no, you know, we don't plan on, maybe when we get south of town, we might do some what's called, uh, vibratory plow. Where it's a knife that goes in the ground, no like o- open cut trenching or anything like that through town. So we're, we're not gonna dig up any roads. Now, if we do have to cross a water line in the middle of a road, you know, that's something by Julie law, we have to, um, expose to find it. Uh, the only reason we wouldn't, and, uh, is if, you know, the water company or whoever's responsible for it said, hey, we really don't want you to cut our road. If you go X amount of feet deep, then we're okay with that. But obviously, as a company, we can't take responsibility for that, but we're trying to do what's best, you know, as far as cutting the road or as opposed to not hitting the utility, things like that. So I don't know if there's any specific questions or, or anything else I can kinda go on about, I think that's really the ma- majority of it. And like I said, Jack has a map, if you'd like to see it of a proposed route through town.
I'd like to please.
Yeah. How far are you? What do you mean?
You say you come from Albion?
Well, we're all along fifteen.
So you already, already are?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a, a box just north of town.
Okay.
Could've come straight off the state highway. So, yeah, if you look at this, this kinda shows you, I mean, this is more of a, this is probably the, the page that would be the best to look at. But, right now, this is our existing line here, running across the north side of fifteen. So we'd have to hop the side of the, hop the highway, come down, that's a show I'm going down. Main, Hackberry, Church, and then down in the towers over here southeast of town. Now, if you're looking more specific, and some of these vault locations will be adjusted a little bit, the aerials aren't exact. Your writing's in. So this is really close, so you guys can look at this more, I can leave a map, I don't, I don't mind to do that.
Is it this side of the street?
So, I'm sorry. So yeah, running down the east side of Main.
The first page, after the top, the first page is like blown up.
All the way down the side, sorry, I probably should've given some of those kinda halfway in between. And at the railroad, we're gonna cross, Jack has worked on most of this route as far as size of the road goes. I don't care to leave something in town, we're not planning on starting on this next week or anything like that. Um, we still have to deal with the state out on the highway for crossing, so.
And this was really a rough draft, me and you had kinda talked a little bit. And, uh, I didn't really get to meet with anybody as far as utilities yet or get any maps, so. That's, I mean, there's gonna be some alter, alterations and, and maybe crossings of the, different sides of the road. But in general, that's pretty much how would the proposal be.
Yeah, so we're looking at path, path least resistance, the less, less impact to what's already in the ground that's possible, you know, that we can find.
From what I understand, there's already fiber optic under the ground?
Yeah.
The way you guys are going.
So, um, the communications industry, um, it's, it's a little bit different than maybe like a rural water, you know, turning into a city water, turning back into a rural water, borrowing or things like that. Um, we're all separate entities, and so like for the tower, for instance, right now, the tower's running without Clearwave, right? So, there's more than one provider that goes to it to provide backup, additional bandwidth, things like that. And so Clearwave is its own, own company, and so, we don't, I mean, there's no like, hey, we'll use your fiber here because our, our network is also set up to be a hundred percent underground. We put all our stuff in conduit, there's a lot of companies that direct bury. I mean, there's also companies that do it like we do, you know, I'm not saying we're, we're, we do it like no other company does. But we're, you know, like, we don't have anything in, up in the air along poles. Because, you know, you have a windstorm, you have an ice storm, and you might have an outage. You know, if it rains too much, you might have an outage. With Clearwave, it's not that way. Uh, we take the time to spend a lot of money upfront to do it the right way, and that's why a lot, a lot of times there isn't the option to, um, to share other paths or, um, existing infrastructure that's in town. Cause a lot of it, like, even since I started ten years ago, the way this is done is tons different. The stuff that they've come up with, the new kinda fiber, um, the better, I mean, this, you know, the fiber that we put in ten years ago is not as good as the fiber we're putting in now, there's other ways to do things. And so, um, to keep up with that, uh, that's just not something, you know, that we can use. But no, fair question, sorry, it's probably way too long of an answer, but.
Yeah, I, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure you guys know, so.
We've got a map that-
Is this something I can take, or you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll say, cause I can make, I can definitely come back up here and meet with whoever to mark, or so walk it out. Um, see if any of these vaults are gonna be in any conflict with anybody or-
Okay.
So, definitely I'll be back up here.
Yeah, and so we can take a look at this and, I mean, you're, you're more than welcome to hang on to that map. I just don't want somebody to get married to it if we make sure that is, and then somebody holds on to this and comes out there and, like, heaven forbid, somebody digs somewhere, cause they think we're on one side of the road or not, or, why didn't they do it like this? So, um, if you want to, that's fine, and just, just know that there's probably gonna be some minor changes. I mean, even around the railroad, there's all kinds of issues, you know, to deal with them to get across, that they might alter our path, so. But ultimately, we'll have to get a county permit too, from Dustin Bunny.
Right.
From the county up to kick, to come there as well, so. And then a couple other hiccups down by the, the, uh, alley.
This is gonna be strictly computer.
So it's, so it's, so it's all data, if you're talking about like video, we don't do any video. Uh, we do, there are, there is phone that's available, but our main, main deal is data. That's what we, uh, that's what we provide, you know, with all the streaming things these days, obviously, that's, that's the consumer's choice. But, but no, there's, there's no video.
You do realize we have very few businesses here in this town?
I do, uh, I mean, I guess maybe not, I'm not super up on the, well, my, but the thing was, like, as far as getting down to the tower, um, if I can take the path through town and then something does come along residential where, you know, I'm allowed to, to build the residence. Right now, right now, and for, for a while, it's been commercial, but there is a push, you know, with all of the, you know, Southern Illinois area to provide residential, I'm not saying it's gonna be tomorrow, I'm not saying it's gonna be next year. Um, but if we do this now, then there's not a bunch of upfront costs, like, I'll, I'll put it this way, let's say, you know, we can't build all, all residential or all cities at once, right, or all villages at once. You have to pick which ones are most profitable to the company to build. So I'm already in Belmont, and I say, hey, these houses are all really close together, this is a profitable bill for us to do. Or, or hey, we're still X amount of feet away from Belmont, we're gonna have to put Mainline through and then do all this. You know, right, right now, I can't put a number on it, but let's just say this build cost us $200,000. That wouldn't be out of the ballpark as far as what it costs to build some of this stuff sometimes, this backbone, all the balls for putting all this stuff, is, I don't have to factor that in when it comes to the time to build residential. You don't have to say, well, upfront, it's gonna cost us this even to get there, is it really worth to build to a resident? Who, you know?
That's where the old water line is.
You can't charge, I mean, you have to, it has to be a reasonable amount, right, or nobody's gonna sign up for it, so. Um, so some of that, yes, no business right now, but since the tower's down there, it justifies coming this route.
Are y'all working on a timeframe where you will have offer residential, I mean?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't have, I can't give you any, any hard timeline or any of that, and I can't promise anything. I just know, all I can really say is, I know the push is there for grants and all kinds of other things to get fiber optics to rural areas and, and, or cities like this where everybody's kinda pretty compact. It makes it a lot easier to justify instead of going one mile to get one person. That's not out of the realm either, it's just, that's a lot harder to do. And so, that's why I said, this year, no, next year, maybe, the following year. Uh, twenty years down the road, no, I don't think you're waiting twenty years to get your residential. Um, I don't wanna come in here and feed you that, that, you know, yeah, Clearwave said, we're getting residential, you know? No, but I'm saying, it's gonna happen at some point, and I, I don't get to make the decisions.
Right.
But if somebody's looking at a sheet of paper, the financials, I can tell you right now, based on what I've seen is, what costs to get there plays a big role on where you build, it's gotta be profitable, or companies won't do it.
Right.
So.
Would the village be looking at any of your type of, uh, monetary reimbursement for the use, for the use of our property?
So, uh, we are a telecommunications provider, so public utility. Um, so right now, anytime now, anytime we build through somewhere, so like some places have like a franchise agreement, where you pay percentages based on the customers you provide for. Um, as a telecommunications provider, um, the state passed a, a mandate back in two thousand and three, where, uh, we have the rights to build within public right of way to get to places to build. Now, how that works is, let's say we were to sign on a customer here. Then, what it does is the state charges a, a, a fee, or a tax, with what they call a telecommunications tax, which, which is kicked back to the city or the village, whichever. But at this time, no, there won't be any monetary, what I'm trying to say is, I'm not trying to be a salesman, cause it's not what I am. But right now, it's tens of thousands of dollars, it's infrastructure that the city doesn't have to pay for to get it in here. Cause that's half the battle sometimes, is just getting somebody to come over here, cause somebody's gonna look at this and say, I don't wanna spend all that upfront when I only have, I don't know how many senses you have, but I'm just trying to be honest with you that, you know, big companies, they look at stuff and they say, what's profitable? And this means, it's already here.
Right.
Which is a big piece of it. So I'm not, not really trying to sell you anything, I just want, want you guys to know that we're going to the tower. Honestly, I think this probably should've been the path to begin with, but the other way had a little less footage. And now this way is really probably the best way, cause you kinda could, or two, I'm all for building for two, three, four years down the road instead of, hey, what's the quickest way I can do it now? And I think, cause this, you know, we're gonna have to deal with the railroad, and again, we're gonna have to deal with state. We, I mean, there's a lot of accounting, I mean, county's good, but there's a lot of other hurdles along the way as well, so.
The reason, one reason I ask is, I know in two thousand and sixteen, we had our ordinances redone. And at that time, we started collecting a percentage from Mount Carmel Public Utility for the gas bills and for Ammer and for the electric.
Sure.
And that had never been done in the past, so, you know, luckily for us, the gentleman, the company that rigged our ordinances was aware of this and- So I know it is just a little bit different with the communications, uh, we didn't have to deal with that because obviously we didn't have it at the time. But, um, Belmont does have ordinances in place to, you know, we wanna make sure that you-
Yeah, so, yeah, to do with Mount Carmel Public Utility and our power, or the, you know, when the south, I don't know.
What tar are you going to?
Down southeast of town, there's an AT&T tower down there.
Out here on the hill?
By the cemetery, yeah.
Just past the cemetery.
Okay, thank you guys, that's my tar.
Oh.
Oh, is it?
So there you go, already paid. Um, but like, so, so right now, the gas and the power, they serve everyone in town, right? Or at least, most part, maybe they share this road or this road, or maybe some people have both. But right now, our line going through isn't going to serve anyone in, in the city at this time, or the village at this time. I can't, is it village or city, I feel bad, I feel bad for saying, the village at this time. But you're getting a percentage back because they're paying for a service, right? Customer pays $200 a month for the service, you get X percentage, because there's a franchise fee in pa- in place, because you're entitled to do that. But what the state has done is what I'm telling you, is this didn't used to be the case. Okay, communications came in, Frontier, fifty dollar customer, then you would get a percentage of that based on a franchise fee. Or maybe MediaCom, because they're, they're, they're different, they're a TV provider. But for communications, if we were to serve someone, that kickback would come in the form of a telecommunications tax back from the state. And I, I'm, I can, I'm more than happy to get you all the, the stuff on that. It's, again, the state passed that, the mandate that the state will, and I, look, I don't trust the state of Illinois even where anybody else does, but. But they are required to give that back, that percentage, instead of the cities collecting it on their own. I mean, this law actually says, the cities are not allowed to do that, it's against the law for the cities to do that to a telecommunications provider. And so we just fall under the law. But again, it's not like we're getting through scot-free because of, we still have to pay it. But are you getting something without a customer? No. Same thing if the gas company built a big gas line through here, you're not getting anything from that either unless it comes from a customer. Or they had to go across private to get there, or something like that. Everybody, you know, operating it right of way is, uh, well, it's just how we have to do business here, so.
What was the previous route that you had in plan?
Um, I'm not sure which county road it was, uh-
Uh, I think it was like four ninety, five hundred, something like that. Uh, coming off of, uh, is that twelve twenty, twelve? I'd have to look at my map.
I'd have to look at my phone too, cause all these county roads kinda run together after a while.
Further?
Further east.
Further east and then out that way?
Yeah, almost basically where the tower is, and then going up to-
It's up by the cemetery.
Well, no, I know where that is, I'm, I'm asking where the previous path that they were thinking about taking?
So, five hundred? I mean, I don't know if this does any, I don't, I don't-
I thi- I'm guessing it's probably up here-
So like right here we are, so this is, the original path was to come down this road.
Uh-huh, right, and it goes more directly to the tower. And, and you hit a wall there, why?
Because of, uh, private landowners.
Private landowners, yeah.
Um, because it was a private landowner, was there monetary involved in that?
Because they owned to the middle of the road.
Pardon?
Because they owned to the middle of the road. They owned, they owned, they owned the road. We tried to go that way and, and we, we couldn't come to an agreement. I mean, we, ultimately, I mean, I, I would let the landowner probably give, I don't know that I wanna, you know, give too many details on his behalf.
Sure.
But I mean, ultimately, I think that they farmed and they didn't wanna deal with the utility in their farm field. Um, and at some, at some point, I mean, we're here to make money too, right? I mean, you know, I, I think fair amounts were, were offered, and then, once that was backed out of, on his part, I mean, you also have the fees we have to pay the railroad, I mean, they are ridiculous, the fees they are. I mean, you're talking ten to fifteen grand for crossing.
Right.
So, when you talk about that and then trying to do this, well, after that kinda fell through is, hey, look, and this path should really just go through Belmont. I mean, it makes the most sense, you get a community, maybe, I mean, I think it's worth taking a shot at the community getting serviced in the future. Cause again, there's not gonna be another tower pop up that's gonna go through Belmont. Cause this is kinda like, if we build a different way, then it doesn't, it won't justify going back through Belmont later, right? I mean.
When did you start this path?
The original path? Uh, it was late two thousand and twenty.
If you go down through there and hook a water line, town water line, something like that, you just fix it?
So, uh, just like any other utility, you know, we adhere to Julie law. So we're gonna call Julie in before we do our work.
Okay.
You know, if, and again, I'd be, if, I'd just like for everyone to know, Julie laws, like, so, if you're out walking, marking your water line, you have eighteen inches on either side of what it's marked, right? And so, we're not gonna try to traipse on the eighteen and a half inches away and say, alright, well, we're gonna hold your feet to the fire. Yeah, we're gonna go reasonable with distance away, maybe three feet. I mean, we don't wanna go way away, cause then you're kinda monopolizing all the right of way and it kinda just, it, it makes sense to try to get them as close as you can and within reason. But, I mean, if we hit it and it's off mark, then no, we can't take responsibility for it. Now, in a situation that happens like that, yes, we have machinery, we will help out in the ways we can. But for us to just say, well, you know, Clearwave's got deep pockets, they're just gonna fix everything, but we can't necessarily operate like that. If it's, if it's on mark and we hit it, then yeah, I mean, it's on us. It's, it, it really comes down to Julie law of doing, uh, of doing the work through town. So, that's where, I know water is notoriously the one that's hardest to mark, right? Cause it was put in several years ago, before I was born probably. And it's hard to locate sometimes, and that's why, having maps, being able to build away from it is really the, you know, the, the best route to go is trying to do that, if we're gonna cross it, that's why we wanna find it.
The route you're going is our, our water line route.
And, and that's, this is just kinda like-
And that, yeah, that was preliminary, so, um, we, I didn't have this, uh, we, I didn't have time to get back and get this before I made the map. So, we can alter, and that's generally what we do, is try to stay opposite of the municipality waters or, uh, whoever has the waters. Try to be on the opposite side of the road.
And we may come back with the route that's completely opposite of what, I think that we would take the main path through town as the kinda the idea, as the, as the-
Yeah, so our boxes and the size of the road, that, I mean, still with all of you guys' input and everything, we can, um, adjust all that route.
Yeah, cause we're not gonna start on a route without, you know, your guys' thumbs up that, hey, this, this route makes-
When you go down the other side of this street, there's old water lines. The old water, big lines running on the opposite side of this street.
The abandoned ones, is that?
Yeah, and I was like, whenever I come back, I don't know if we can get a meeting to where we can get some of the, maybe some of the people that have ideas of where, you know, the Julie-
We have that.
Yeah. So, and then we'll do our best of, like you said, pothole and actually physically see it if we can, if, if, if there's question, you know, where it could be. We'll, we'll do our best to find it within reason.
What other cities, counties are you set up in?
So, I would probably, at this point, I'd say go to clearwave.com, they've got a map of kinda where we are in Southern Illinois. But, the easiest way to say it is probably I sixty-four south, with the, you know, with the exceptions being like Aldini and Flora.
You are in Flora now?
Uh-huh. And of course, you guys, I mean, we don't go, we don't go too much farther north than Mount Carmel.
Allen Dale.
Yeah, I, yeah, we, yeah, Allen Dale, that's, that's about as north as we go. I, there may be plans to go more north, I don't know.
Where is the next tower you plan to go to after this one, do you know?
I have no idea.
Okay.
They're, as far as engineering goes, you know, they, they sign contracts and then we find them out, we find out afterwards. So this is, you know, this is just kinda a standalone.
Can you give me a few names of customers that you have?
Uh, I don't, I don't like-
Well, most, almost, all, all the schools that we cross, most of the government facilities, the hospitals, nine one ones, um-
No, are you at La Bush Darn Hospital?
Yeah, that's in, uh, Mount Carmel, right? Yeah, where they're, and we've got most of their, a lot of their little, uh, um, offices or surrounding offices and, um, a lot of the libraries, and I thought, I don't know, they still do the, the CNS or whatever they call that, where they, the government uses our fiber to get to schools and, but yeah. Oh, I mean, you can-
Yeah, Mount Carmel was originally built back in two thousand and eleven, I mean, this line's been out here on fifteen for, for about ten years.
That's my-
Yeah, it was originally built to go to schools, uh, nine one one, things like that.
That's my next question, how long the existing line on Route fifteen?
Yeah, yeah, almost, it'd be, it'd be darn near close to ten years, maybe nine. Yeah, yeah, almost, it'd be, it'd be darn near close to ten years, maybe nine. Cause it was one, it probably wasn't the first one built.
But you've never put fiber through here before?
No, we've never been, I mean, not that far south of fifteen until you get to Mount Carmel.
So you're using, so, the line's been out here for ten years and you're going to the tower. So is this tower gonna be communicating with your other towers or why, cause Belmont don't have any big business to use your service?
Well, so, um, Clearwave doesn't own any towers, we're just a provider. So AT&T, like their towers will communicate with themselves, I mean, a lot of times, if you look at bigger maps, I mean, they kinda triangulate towers and they. That's why sometimes you'll hit dead zones where the circles don't cross, I mean, it's a whole other deal. I, we don't own any towers, we don't have the cell service, we don't have cell phones. We are just a, the tower needs bandwidth to, again, like a lot of these projects are five G, right? I mean, uh, expanding all the, you know, now we're, we're four G, now we're five G, they wanted to do all this other stuff and. And so that's why they've asked for bandwidth, why, why AT&T wants to do it out here, you'd have to ask them. Um, but, they've contracted to build out here and so we're gonna do it, I mean, it's, it's another paying customer.
I don't understand what they need the tower there for, is that just for more power or for what they all have?
I mean, AT&T doesn't have a biggest footprint as Verizon does in Southern Illinois, I mean, to my knowledge, I'm not, again, I'm not the.
Is that who your senior partner, AT&T, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, there's quite a few cell towers we have in the area.
Cause there's a, there's a Verizon tower right on the highway.
Well, right, but you know, AT&T, Verizon's different, you know, they're not necessarily gonna.
AT&T doesn't get coverage very far.
I know. Dave, do you, Dave, do you know how long that tower's been out there?
Pardon?
Do you know how long that tower's been out there?
Uh, I don't remember.
Anybody else got any questions for them?
Well, Mr. Flora asked, who do you think will spend some money?
Well, that's what, that's what I would.
Best in the world.
It's just like road construction, I, I, I hate it going through at times, but ultimately, that's money you get spent in my town, so. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's, you know, not a bad thing. But I understand, there's questions, right? I mean, of why you're going through, but like I said, I mean, it's, it is simple as, the tower's back there. I have the ability in my role to pick the route, and so, I get to pick this one and I think this is the best route to come through town. I mean, granted, you know, we can find a way around, but it's probably not as short as this. But, again, this is, eh, I'm not saying I'm like, you know, I grew up in Belmont and I'm like, yes, this is my chance to really. Get it back to the city, but it's a financial decision. I don't, I'm not the guy that makes the financial decisions, but I do all the design. And I get to make this call, I'm thinking, why, why would I not build through a community and get a chance, you know, so, I mean. I'm from a small, I mean, Harrisburg is not, obviously it's very developed, but it, we're, we're less than ten thousand and so, you know. I, I'd love to, to see other communities have a chance at it if the time comes up, so.
So you own the tower property, did you own the adjacent property around it as well? So I'll, I'll probably be, uh, trying to get ahold of you as well, talk to you.
I think that's one eighth of an acre you're sitting on, something like that.
Now, do you own up to the cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Past cemetery.
Yeah. Yeah, I had a, a con- a conversation with them, so, um, I'm just trying to, I haven't had a lot of time on this particular route. But I definitely wanna talk to everybody I can.
Okay.
And feel up to you on what we're doing and.
Yeah, cause this, this is just one part of it, yeah, when we get down south of town, we'll have to, um, just talk to other people. I mean, we wanna be, we wanna be fair, and upfront, we don't just come in and ask for forgiveness later, so. Sorry, I know that's what a lot of the people do. And I, I, we get a bad name because of, we're communications people, I mean, like, what, what kind of, uh, paths do you have with communications providers? I mean, they're in and out of town and leave you with problems, I get it. Uh, and so it's, it's, it, it's a hard going, this is not my first meeting with, with the city, you know, and I, I get it. I expect questions, um, I expect people to think, why, why would you do this? You know, and, and, and we're homegrown, like, I think the biggest thing going is that we do not subcontract out anywhere. Every person works for Clearwave, and I talk to on a daily basis, and there are specific things that they have to go by, and if they don't, then they get in trouble for it. And we'll have to fix it, I mean, it's as simple as that, we'll have to fix it if we do something wrong, so.
So like, when are you wanting an answer?
So, I mean, probably pretty soon to plan a route, um, cause we need to get, we need to get the permits submitted to the railroad and IDOT as soon as possible. They are both, can be a painfully long process. Um, and plus, you know, I can't really start conversations with, uh, Mr. King either until. Until we get a path, then it doesn't make a lot of sense to go down those paths if, if you guys aren't, you know, on board, I'm not saying you have to make a decision tonight, but.
Right.
As soon as you can would be nice, cause the, you know, obviously the, the clock has been ticking for a while and so. We, we would like to, to get all those things entered and, and then, um, we'll get a timeline going, so.
Long process, you talking two, three months or six weeks or?
Um, I would say probably three months, yeah. Three months or longer to get a railroad permit, it, it depends, sometimes if you catch a moment a day. So, yeah, I'll be, you'll be talking sometime, I don't know. Summer, early summer, I mean, as soon as, i- if we happen to get good luck and the railroad gets back faster, but COVID has not helped any of that, so. I'll then just quicken up their process, but as soon as we get those permits back and then obviously we got some, you know, that you came down by the river or the tower. And, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be ready to go as soon as we can, AT&T obviously wants the service, so, to expand the, expand the area, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you, uh, coming.
Yeah, a problem, um, so, you've kinda been in conflict with Jack, so I'm, I'm completely fine if you wanna, you know, communicate to Jack. And he, he draws, and we'll talk about it, and then if he needs to come up and, you know, walk anything out or, or look at details, then, then that's what he's.
I've got his card here, so.
Yeah, yeah, and so, yeah, on the map, again, this is, that's probably gonna greatly change.
We will need that one back too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you need this one back?
Yes.
When you get finished.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Cause it is, I hate to take your only one if you guys are gonna need it, cause I can come back.
One more, okay, we'll take good care of it, yeah.
Alrighty.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Yep.
We thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
It's, it's, assume it's okay if we head out.
It's okay if you guys go ahead and look.
Alright, thanks guys, nice to meet you. Just so you know, like, I always hate this, but like, just to familiarize your face, like, I hate to, nah, anybody see my face when I come to town next time. Better have Jack show his face.
It's me, I'm the old guy.
Oh, okay.
Older guy.
Thanks.
Yeah, make sure.
Take care.
Did I got the minutes going around?
Um, yeah, minutes are around.
To get those approved.
Um, okay, let's see. So you're asking for a motion to approve minutes, let me get my paper here.
Did you lose something?
No, I just didn't know what the computer was covering up here and so I didn't wanna try and misplace anything. Um, I did see on the agenda this evening, we've got that written as the eighth, today is the ninth, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, um, under the treasurer update with Walther County, you gotta hand both.
Yeah, there's.
I'd like to hand that.
Yeah, there's another one, alright. So, looking at this agenda, I, I suppose the floor is still open for public comments, that we're still reviewing.
Yeah. I could've should've happened, that's a roll call, but I got to mess that up, didn't I?
We did roll call, we got her though. You know, I, I, I'm surprised that happened again this month, that switch around.
Well, they had it for, they outworked, dragged Harrisburg, it didn't have a lot of takes.
Yeah, probably so.
Think send that around too.
Oh, yeah, this is what stays here, this is summary accounts.
So is the floor open, is that what you said?
Yes. We're gonna open the floor, anybody like to speak?
I would. Um, I had a few things here, and I saw on the agenda you were gonna bring up, um, ordinances and. Ordinance violations and letters. And, um, in February two thousand nineteen, I was sent this letter. Um, and it says, um, to all Belmont, Belmont residents, due to multiple complaints received by village trustees. And the La Bosh County Sheriff's Office, a review's been done, and be addressing these complaints. To determine if a violation has occurred, we will move forward with legal process, which, and. Some of which include tickets, fines, and court appearances. And I was wondering what's changed from between now and then, that now we can, um, enforce ordinances. Because this was two thousand nineteen, and nothing, nobody has done, I know of us got, we haven't done anything about the ordinances. And this is some of the things that people were complaining, barking dogs and crowing roosters. Accumulation of junk and trash, abandoned houses and mobile homes, illegal parking, overgrowth of vegetation. Illegal burning, and operating ATV and golf carts without a village permit. Um, as far as the illegal burning, that's still going on, um, I think everybody knows.
Can I ask where, Linda?
Where, over here where they're burning that house down that partially burnt. Um, we all know that's illegal, according to state law. Um, that's the letter.
Yeah, I, I can answer some of that. Uh, a lot of those were, uh, complaints that the board received at the time, and the people were spoken with in person. And they did correct it on their own.
And Linda, I have, I actually have a letter again this evening that I'm, um, presenting to the board, similar to the same letter. Cause we're still receiving complaints like what you had this evening. And, um, I've, uh, got here for the board members, exactly, we're in our ordinances that we're gonna. Reason why we need to go ahead and prosecute, we need to, you know, carry, carry on forward. So, we will be addressing that a little later in the, the meeting this evening.
Okay, so, right now, he's burning down the rest of that house that didn't burn, and that's illegal. And it says that, um, I'm supposed to.
Is it, it's what, a garage, isn't that, what do you have in a garage?
Yeah, it says your local government, which is you guys, is authorized to enforce the general prohibition against open burning. So that means you guys. And it's illegal, and on top of that, it's unhealthy. All that stuff's already burnt partially, so it's got little cinder parts that are traveling, small particles in the air. The stuff that's burnt, other things that were in that garage has melted into that wood, and now that's being burnt. And he says he just bo- burned planks, but everything in there is such a successful to be burnt. If he's gonna burn that one, just throw that on there too. So we really don't know what's being burnt down there. And I just don't wanna see it started again, where every few days, for a while there, cause this house all got started, cause every few days, somebody was burning something. Burning couches and tires and everything they could think of, just they didn't want it, they could burn it. And we can't let that get, go back to the, our town and go back to that. You know, we're not a third world country, we have a dumpster, or you have, provide service twice a year. And I don't know if everybody's aware of this, but you can take stuff to Mount Carmel, you have to pay a fee. But you can take stuff up there, I think I've seen you up there taking stuff. You have to pay a fee, but why not get up with somebody else to ask them to take and take it up there and split the cost? You know, that's this ground level pollutants, it's not like over the power plant, where they have, uh, scrubbers and stuff to clean the air. You don't see any of that stuff on these fires around here. And, year before last, they were up there burning, uh, fiberglass insulation. And I had to, um, I'm riding on the corner there without having to burn that trailer down. And I don't wanna see us going back to that. While they were burning that, kids were riding back and forth on their bicycles. Sometimes we have a lot of kids in this town, cause of their rental properties. And elderly, and elderly are susceptible to it, and I think that we can do better than that. If we're gonna have a dumpster or the curb service again, we need to plan it out a little better, and let people be aware, so maybe they need help with something. And we can get together and help them get stuff out to the curb. We need to go ahead and remind people, because I think it was brought up in a meeting after that, last time. When we were gonna plan it the next year, or the next season, that not everybody got that letter. I know you guys took it to our house, but they said never everybody got that. So we had everybody putting mattresses out, and then the people wouldn't take it because they weren't wrapped. And so then they took them all down this way and they had got burnt, and that's not right. So we need to get better with that, and if you're gonna start enforcing.
Need no more dumpsters, so we can get rid of this stuff.
I suppose you could say, if we're gonna enforce this stuff, why not let everybody know you're gonna enforce it?
Provide something to get rid of.
Let everybody know you're gonna enforce it, and give them the spring cleanup time, or dumpster, or however you end up doing it, curbside. And the fall, that gives them two seasons to get rid of stuff without getting in trouble.
They get two seasons right now.
Huh?
They get two seasons now.
I know, but then, let them know that after these two seasons, we're gonna start enforcing this stuff, and really do it. Because everybody's got junk in the yard, I'm no exception, we've all got it, but some of this stuff is just outrageous. But we do need to crack down on this burning, because I'm not gonna go in around this town like a, a mad woman looking for fires, that's not my place. But if I see it, I'm gonna say something, and I don't go searching this stuff out. Now, I did ride around last year on my bike, and almost everybody had a burn pile, which is fine. But three fourths of them had bicycles, toys, mattresses, all that stuff on the burn pile. So not everybody's doing it, I know we have a problem getting rid of this stuff, but if we're supplying ways to do it, then they need to take advantage of that. And give them enough time where they can maybe need help getting that stuff out there, I know there's a lot of people that live, but they knew. I think we need better communication in this town, as far as stuff like that, you know? And I have a bunch more stuff, but I just don't wanna get into it, there's one more thing, cause I'm not, I don't wanna be negative and I'm not wanting to call anybody out. I just want our town to be better. Now, I did bring up one thing when that tree was cut down in the park. The next meeting, I came in here, and I asked for y'all to think about putting, uh, making up a ordinance. Where if a tree is cut on public property, that we replace that tree with a tree of the same species. Cause you know, we don't wanna cut down an oak tree and plant a crepe myrtle, you know, we wanna, cause we're building this for the future. So every time a tree is cut down on public property, we need to replace that tree. And I thought everybody agreed, or the people in the, out here did, that it would've been a good idea. And we can get like a, you know, not one of those little spandally trees, but something to some kind of gurk, you know, like a, what are they, six foot, you know, something that's gonna, has a chance to live, and replace it, because all of our trees are getting old, and we're cutting them down one by one, and what are we gonna be left with? And I got more, but I just, I just don't wanna go into it, I just don't wanna be standing here again, concentration. But I wish that we would take a little more pride in our town. And, um, have you made any kind of, um, ideas or anything about the park improvement since we talked last, Martha?
No.
Thank you.
Um, Linda, I did, uh, look into the tree replacement.
Okay.
And, um, we still have several more trees that are needing to come down, so let's see what we get done, hopefully this summer, and see what we can do. Just give us a little more time to see what's rotten out there, and what needs to come down, what's leaning now, and then we'll move on. But I did look at that and consider it last year when you mentioned it.
Okay, because it wasn't brought up or anything after that at any of the meetings, as far as I was wondering.
Alright.
So we're gonna, we're gonna wait till we cut all the trees down, then try to do something?
You know, that's not gonna be an overnight job, it's gonna, we're gonna get some more trees down, see where we're at, and then we can figure out our spacing, because right now there's several trees back there that still need to be dealt with.
So are we gonna keep track of the number, and retro?
Well, not one for one, it, it probably won't happen that way.
Why not?
But we, well, because then we might have a, too many trees out there all over again, but we will look at it.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, and I was gonna ask you too, you said you had more stuff? Feel free to put that in the drop box, and that a way we can still address it, we can look at it and start thinking on it, and figure out what, what, what you're needing, what residents are needing. I think we've said that before, that we wanna hear from you, we wanna know what you need, put it in the box so we can start looking at it and see what we can do.
I just want us to have a better town, I know if we all work together, we can, and I don't like our town being a laughingstock.
What do you mean, several more trees need cut already?
I think there were, we had talked about trees last year, last May, and I don't know that they all came down.
You didn't have a meeting on the last one you cut.
That was covered last year.
You couldn't even find the minutes on it.
It's in the minutes.
That cut down kinda disappeared, huh?
Okay, sir, do you, Dave, do you want the floor now? Okay, so you get this to work for me.
You want the floor now, Dave?
Oh, I go get the floor? Oh, you're gonna set me for five minutes, okay?
No, that's what we're asking.
Oh, okay.
Do you want the floor?
Yeah.
Alright.
You're gonna set me for five minutes, huh?
Yes.
Yes, just like I was.
Oh, okay, you didn't set her for five minutes.
They was watching, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I did, Dave, thank you.
I see your records made it back.
What records, sir?
The records when the cabinet sat in there, when I walked over and opened the drawer, all them city records were in there.
What are you talking about?
Oh, we did gotten memory loss.
Here, let me look at your camera real close, and I wanna tell your camera
Oh, okay.
that I bought a cabinet from Wabash General Hospital on surplus.
Okay.
Okay, for twenty-five dollars seventy-eight cents, a great deal.
Okay.
We brought it in here, it's in this back room here.
Sitting in there?
There was nothing in it, and I told you not-
They have city records?
You came and asked me, and I told you.
I was prepared to that, when you left and looked at it, and they city records in it.
There was not city records in it.
Hell, there was.
Sir? I can't believe it.
I love Dave.
I can't believe it.
Because it comes from the clerk's, clerk's house. Remember that meeting, she took all that stuff to her house?
Dave, you are so mistaken, I am so sorry that you are confused about that.
I ain't too no confused.
Yes, you are.
Uh-uh.
Totally.
That filing cabinet I bought, when me and the wife was back here working, it wasn't back here. It went up to the clerk's house. When you took it from the clerk's house, when she quit, you bring it down here, and I walked over and looked at it, and they was filing paperwork in it.
What, what day did you, when?
But then she burned the filing cabinet out, I was standing over there. I brought the video camera over and everything.
Okay, well, you have your receipt from Wabash General.
I surely do, I have that.
Would you prove it to the camera, please, and prove it to Mr. King, because he's calling you a thief, and he's out.
Then we got two filing cameras just identically alike, then ain't we? Sitting back here.
I don't think so, sir.
Is that why we got two identically, because I know the filing cabinet.
I don't even know what you're talking about, Dave.
Well, I do.
Well, you can accuse her all you want.
Because I know just about where everything's back here.
You can accuse her all you want, she bought the, the filing cabinet from Wabash General.
Then we got two of them, just alike, then ain't we?
No, I don't think so, I don't think there's a cabinet back there.
Then where'd the one, the other one disappear to?
Here's the paperwork, and I haven't turned it in yet.
Anybody, they have the receipt.
Where'd the other filing cabinet go?
Hey.
Right, there's the receipt, would you like to see it?
I could've had one made up too.
Yeah, it, it says Wabash General Hospital, thank you.
I guess you could've got that made up.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, could you make fun of me, Butch?
Yes, I am, because you're not, you're more reasonable than that, Dave.
Well, I'll just tell you what I saw.
Don't embarrass yourself like that.
Why was the records doing that to him?
Don't, don't embarrass yourself by saying this.
Sir, there was not any of that.
I saw records in there when I walked over.
I'm not gonna tell you.
You did not.
City records.
What did they say? What, what kind of records?
Well, I didn't have time to read them.
Oh, okay.
Well, did you see the, how do you know there was city records, I mean?
Because I opened it up, they sitting right here at the door when she unloaded it.
What, what kind of records?
They city records, Belmont, 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 records, all in the top drawer.
You were with your son when you came over that day?
Yeah, we asked you, I was wanting to know if you was gonna tell us the truth.
And I did, I absolutely did. Your son asked me, were there city records in there, and I said, "I'm, sir." No, I thought you was coming to help us carry it in, did you not see me struggling? I know how foolish of me.
Alright, we, I heard it off the cabinet.
You're the one that brought it up, Dave.
You just don't want a minute, so, okay.
I can't believe you're possibly accusing me of that.
It's like the tree, huh? We had the meeting on that one before we cut it. Well, we didn't, we didn't have no meeting, no nothing. We put that on the record.
About this, that's past history.
Oh, past, we can't bring up the past?
It's obvious.
You do it every, you do it every time you come in here.
That's just like the last meeting we had here with these ladies, you cut me off how many times? Oh, you're dismissed, that really, really, I mean, you done them ladies wrong, they weren't even done.
They were done, and you were...
Oh, yeah, they really had the contract out when you said, "You're dismissed," didn't you?
Um, states you saw.
They had, they kinda like, uh, they come to a meeting. You're supposed to sit there at a meeting. When I started talking, you interrupted me how many times? Oh, it was awful. So I guess we're gonna cut trees, how much money did we spend this month? We bought gasoline, we bought chlorine for the, out here, and we bought, uh, a light out here, and what else? We bought all kinds of stuff, but we didn't have no meeting over. You know, we don't have to have meetings when we spend taxpayers' money, I guess. Nothing comes before the board. Nothing does.
You know, I don't have time to listen to this stuff, my wife's not feeling well, and I'm gonna go home.
Oh, okay, bud.
If you wanna bring it up in May or something like that, I won't be here and have to listen to this bull crap. I won't. And I respect you, Dave, but that is absolutely bull crap.
What is?
Dave, thank you.
What you accusing her of?
Well, there should be two cabinets back there then, identically alike.
Dave, thank you very much.
Oh, oh, you don't wanna listen to me?
No, I don't, because it's not the truth.
Well, I, there should be two cabinets identically alike back there then.
There might be, it might not be, I don't know.
Maybe, it may not be, okay?
Well, I don't like it.
Then what was the records doing in it?
Someone gonna wonder.
What was the city records doing in it? I saw myself.
I'm going home.
Pl- please, doll, let's con- let's conduct our meeting, okay?
Well, I don't have to listen to you.
You're done, your five minutes, I heard the time.
My five minutes is up, okay.
Thank you for the time and your energy.
But you sure did make an ass out of yourself when you run them women off last meeting. I'll tell you, I was awful.
No, she did, because I had my taxes done the very next day.
You didn't even get to vote that night.
And I stopped.
Yes, he did, he seconded the motion.
He didn't, he didn't even get to vote on it, huh?
He's done, let's move on, guys, um...
I got it on tape.
On with the meeting.
Good, I'm glad you did.
Brad, do you have anything?
I'm sorry.
I just wanna thank the person who ever put the sign up by my alley, so I ain't gotta deal with nobody driving through my damn yard anymore and wrecking it up.
Oh, I went down there and the ruts were awful.
You didn't have a meeting on putting it up, but I'm glad they got it up, though.
They got it over.
Ruts were really bad, and I'm, I'm glad we were able to get that done, and I hope it doesn't happen again.
I hope it don't happen again, neither.
Well, it's just like mine, it, they can't read.
Well, I don't know if she could read or not.
Dead end, they go down, they come, they back up, turn down my driveway and leave, you know, it says dead end, dead end.
I just thought it was funny, they had to call a record to pull it out. Ain't my vehicle getting messed up.
What's the pound of dead end, son?
Bradley, I, I did, um, I did try to contact both records to make sure they had no objections, but that is on the city property, so it shouldn't be any problem. But, um, I was kinda wanting to note, uh, not through that sign, but that's what we, that's what we used, so... And thank you for the acknowledgement.
I'm glad they got the sign up, but sure didn't have no meeting on it, to where to put it, how to put it, who bought it, what did we pay for? We don't have any discussions like that around here.
Now, you do have anything?
That would be to the street superintendent. I do have something, it won't take very long. I tended, what was it, last meeting, yeah? And I just noticed the public speaking was out of hand, and I just wanna remind everybody the law on public's, on the public's right to speak at a meeting. Um, this is, the book I am reading this out of is the Illinois Municipal Handbook, and it's the two thousand eighteen edition. Um, our ordinances here in Belmont are mirrored with this, so...
They don't even know how to read that, Peggy.
Well, I'm gonna read it.
Peggy, I don't mean to interrupt, but I actually was gonna remind the public of that too, does, so I have a copy, does anyone else wanna see it? I highlighted it, go ahead.
No, if you wanna address it, that's fine, I just think that, you know, things got really out of hand fast, and I just think we need to remind each other how this is supposed to be conducted.
Please go ahead and read it for me.
It's very simple.
Yeah, we're supposed to let the public speak, but they don't like doing that.
Okay, it's my five minutes now, right, is it my right?
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Section two point zero six of the OMA, that's the Open Meetings Act, involves the public's right to speak during the governmental meetings. This section states that any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address the public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body. All public bodies, therefore, must develop a procedural rule that allows the public to have the ability to address the public body. While this amendment permits the public to have an opportunity to address public officials, it does not require the public officials to engage in a debate, to make themselves available for abusive or harassing behavior by a member of the public, or to provide on-the-spot answers to members of the public on the topics that are raised by the public. While the language of the OMA does not expressly require that such an opportunity to be provided at an open meeting, it is likely that any policy adopted by a public body regarding the ability to address public officials will be tested against a reasonableness standard with a significant bias in favor of the public. Most municipalities now allow a period for public comment at every meeting. It is also hard to know what the government must do in order to accomplish the recording of the rules as required by the statute. But it goes on to say that, um, it's not to be ridic, the public body, which is the town board and the mayor, the clerk, treasurer, if we had one, uh, are not to be ridic, ridiculed. They do not have to respond to any question that the public would ask, uh, they do have to listen to it. Now, they set forth a rule, it's in our village ordinance, that each speaker gets five minutes. When you address the board at a public meeting, you're addressing the entire board, you cannot call out a single member and harass them or question a single member of the board, you are addressing the entire board. And I just wanted to remind everybody of the law in terms of state of Illinois.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
I'll, I'll follow up on that with what's actually in our ordinance, um, our ordinances, uh... What's the original, it's, I think it's chapter twenty...
Well, we get all the junk cars off their...
One, um, speaking.
Places.
One dash two dash thirteen.
Public comments closed.
Yes.
Any person not a member of the village board may address the village board in regard to Ivan's proposed business under the following rules. He or she shall rise and state his name for the record, unless further time is granted, the board will give them five minutes. All remarks made shall be addressed to the village board, not to the member thereof. No person other than the board member recognized the individual addressing the board and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion directly or through a member of the board without the permission of the mayor. No question shall be asked of any trustee except through the mayor. Any person making personal or impotent remarks, or shall have become destruct, destructive, addressing the village board shall be forth, forthwith evicted from the boardroom by the mayor. Um, it goes on to say that if that person does not leave, then we will call the, um, master of arms, sergeant of arms, and that they would, um, carry out the mayor's wishes. It also...
That is the law.
Yeah, that's the law, and that's, that's, that's Illinois law and our, in our ordinances. In our ordinances, also, we address that, um, censor of trustees, expulsion of trustees, any trustee acting out or appearing in lieu of disgraceful manner, or who uses, do not know this word? Approprius, obscene, or insulting language to, or about the member of the board, or who does not obey the order of the chair, shall be on motion, censored by majority vote of the members present, or expelled by two-thirds vote of all trustees elected. So that is telling us that when we're at a board meeting, we're to stay calm, keep our accusations in a calm manner. If you wanna accuse somebody of stealing a cabinet, that can happen, but you need to do it in a polite manner.
Oh, you jumped out in front of me.
So...
Floor's closed.
You know, I did, I did react poorly, and I do apologize for that. It's not every day that I get accused of, um...
Being a thief.
Being a thief, or moving records inappropriately, so I, I do apologize for that action.
That, uh, makes sense, because you wanna have a meeting that is in harmony with everything, actually, actually accomplish something. But it says that you don't have to answer our questions, well, how are we supposed to? If we have a question, if you just don't wanna answer it, how are we supposed to find out?
We opened the floor, Linda, so that we can know what you want, what you're thinking, and what you need, and then we'll take it under consideration. We don't wanna get in a match like I just did, I don't wanna behave that way.
I don't either.
I wanna hear what you have to say, and I wanna consider it, I don't wanna react.
So, like the tree, so like the tree thing, if you don't mention it every, every meeting, I gotta come and bring it up again? And not knowing what y'all are gonna do, or?
Uh, and I did address it that evening. You don't recall that?
No.
I did address it.
I heard everybody say it was a good idea, but I didn't hear anything said in it.
Okay.
Set in motion. And I understand what you're saying, but if we, if you don't have to answer our questions, how are we gonna know?
We have to address the issue.
That's not what that said.
Yeah, it is, we have to address the issue, but we'll do it collectively. You can't just pick on me, on this same me, and start, and start a dialogue between you and me.
Right.
You address the, we address the issues you have collectively, and then we come to some kind of a sensible consensus of what to do with the, to maintain safety, health, of everybody in the community, you know?
Because sometimes it feels like I could get as much answers if I went there and asked the wall that same question. I think this town has a really bad lack of communication between the citizens and the board. And we're a little town, and people should have some kind of info on what's going on too. But I, I completely understand it's not gonna be, it's crazy to come up here, it makes me nervous. I can't. You do not accomplish anything.
I wanna know when you're gonna get rid of all these vehicles around town, junkers sitting in the yard.
Can we move on?
There's none of them licensed, none of them stickered.
This is a good point right here, that is out of order. That is out of order.
Oh, do you?
And he knows better than me.
I'm talking to her.
And I'm talking to you.
Oh, okay.
Motion to what?
The floor's closed now, so let's go ahead and, uh, approve the past minutes. Does everybody have a copy of this? I had had this out last time.
I got it.
Okay. I'm pretty sure John did.
He did that night.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, so first, on the minutes. I wrote them, so I have proof.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion.
It was a job.
I'll make a motion, we have three minutes.
Second?
I'll second it.
And votes? Um, Stacy?
Yeah.
Minutes? Linda? Yes. Allison, John?
I need a, um, motion to approve the bill, I reckon.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second. We'll have a vote. Martha?
Yeah.
And Leon?
Yes.
And absent.
Yep. They, they, it's a water report. Stacy, you got that?
Oh, yeah, everything's good, uh, leveled or where they're supposed to be.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
The comment too, that, um, Bill did a good job, and other workers on the hunt on the roads clearing the road, did a good job, he's out before the ice came.
I'll pass that along to them.
Thank you.
What month bills was that one?
Bills presented this evening, they, you ask that question every month. Okay.
Be last month, wouldn't it? Dave.
And then, uh, let's see what the next one is.
I'd like to, uh, make a little speech or whatever. I'd like to thank you all for being on the, uh, town board and, uh, putting up with everything that goes on. And, uh, that's about all I can say. I really appreciate you being here. And, uh, we need to, I need a motion to go into closed session.
For the employee hours in the pay?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Um, also, the, um, closed session minutes need to be reviewed in closed session. Uh, you, let me see, maybe back to this. First was Stacy.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second. Closed session. Um, vote. Leon?
Yes.
And Martha?
Yes.
So at oh seven forty-two, we're going into closed session.
You didn't say anything about what else was on the agenda?
Did I get my full wiler sticker tonight?
What about the ordinances and the letters you sent out?
It's still on here, we should, probably should not be in closed session very long, we'll be coming back after open session.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry for interrupting, let's scrub the room we went over.
Did I get my full wiler sticker tonight?
Do you have your full wiler here to be looked at?
Did all the rest of them get looked at?
Yes, they did, sir.
Yeah, they had right outside, but they...
Oh, and that meeting that night, what about the rest of them that's got stickers? They ain't got no signs, no horns, no nothing on them.
Um, we'll try to help you after we get back to closed session.
But they got stickers. So how'd they get those? And I'd like to know, uh, the guy I talked to about the stickers...
David. Hey, you're in violation, really.
The money.
Don't, I wouldn't be putting it online, because you're in a strict violation. They don't have to, they don't have to look at you, they're in a...
I want my sticker. He handed out stickers.
You had five minutes.
They need to get inspected.
I would ask for it then.
Ain't this your term, you quit on?
It is.
All right.
Peggy, were the, um, comments always at the beginning of the meeting or were they at the end?
What'd you quit for, Peggy?
Uh, my father-in-law was dying and I had to take off work and take care of him. I quit in January, he died right into February. Then I took a full-time job. Because this is a full-time job. And I was working full-time and doing this, and I, it consumed you.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I did it for seven years. Learned a lot, learned a lot. Enjoyed it, enjoyed it all. But, it's a different world that we live in now.
Well, got me, they hollered special meeting that last meeting, special meeting, special meeting. Then they turn around and discuss payment to the clerk right in front of everybody.
No, there's no set rule on that, that's just something that's advised by the town board. Um, a lot of people, like when you have, um, outside speakers come in, say, example, tonight, we have the speakers come in for a presentation, you generally always want to put them first, so they can get out of here, because they're, they're not interested in the city business, but trust me, they don't get involved. So you want to have those people come in and get out of here as soon as possible. Now, when the public, and a lot of times the public wants the floor at the beginning of the meeting, because they don't care about it either, they just want to stand up and say, hey, could you put a sign in my yard and then move on, you know, you got it, the home gets up or whatever. So, I, when I was on there, what I did was I went through the agenda and then opened the floor at the end of the session, so they could address what was talked about.
Right.
How did they pay bills? They didn't have meetings and paid bills, two meetings. They'd call no special meeting, no nothing, paid bills.
But people, you know, they don't want to sit through the whole meeting, because it takes a long time to go through bills and minutes, and all they want to do is just say a piece and leave, you know? So that's why I think they decided, if it's my understanding, I think that's why they decided to open up the floor at the beginning of the meeting. Um, as for as the monthly bills, I mean, your water bill and your, not your water bill, but our water bill, but your light bill, your gas bill, all the, all the bills that come in on a routine monthly basis, that come in every month.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, they have to be paid, and you, if there's not even...
They got thirty days to call a special meeting, so they can vote on that.
If there's not even a meeting, you can still pay those bills and get those approved at the next meeting. Now, if it's anything extra, that's, that's not a routine monthly meeting.
You've got to have a meeting, a special meeting to pay those bills.
Not if it's like a monthly bill, that's, not if it's a monthly bill.
How'd you do that, Lori? The months were two behind.
It was your amarin bill, your, um, your chlorine bill, which that's not a monthly bill, so that would...
They come in every month, same time.
It's reoccurring.
All right.
Anything, yeah, thank you, re, a re- amarin bill.
Then they pay them, but they should have had thirty days to call a special meeting. Thirty days. They didn't call them.
If there's not a current president, you don't have to call a special meeting to pay your routine bills.
Yes, you do. You better look in that book.
I, I know the law, you do not, you, but you have to get that approved at the next meeting.
What you having board members for though, if you're going ahead and paying bills?
That's just the law, Dave, don't ask me, I just know, that's just the law. You can't pay, say, they went out and bought some tools, that's, that's not a recurring bill, you couldn't approve that one, that would have to be held off for the next month or the next meeting.
They don't bring nothing for the board, they go ahead and buy stuff, do stuff.
You were saying something about why didn't you have a meeting to pay for the chlorine? You don't have to have a meeting to pay for the chlorine, that is a routine maintenance that has to be done. You, but we buy chlorine about every three months.
You should have anything that goes on, just like them stop signs out there. They give them to the county.
That's what a FOIA is for, if you want to...
They give them to the county. All right, where was the meeting out to give them to the county?
You don't have to, because that's just the process, that is the legal process.
Just a process without meetings, huh?
It's not the Belmont process, Belmont don't have to have a meeting to do that, it's the process of the state.
The board's supposed to have a meeting before they give it to the county.
No.
It's got to be in the minutes.
You can't do anything with those signs.
You just don't write it in the minutes.
You can't put them up to forbid to anybody.
You can't hide stuff, Peggy, you can't keep hiding stuff.
I don't feel like, whenever I got on the board seven years ago, I felt like the board was hiding stuff, I felt like there was money...
They still are.
I felt like there was money missing. I, I had such, I was just angry, I felt like, you know, they were doing things wrong.
They're hiding stuff.
Then I got on the board, and I started learning the law of how things are done, and I realized that there's no stealing, you can't, you're audited, you're under a fine tooth and...
And the audit don't catch the stealing, you got to catch that yourself.
There's no catch, there's no catch, turn the hand.
The audit don't catch thieves.
Yes, it does.
No, it don't, you got to do that yourself, the audit, just to audit your records. They don't catch the thief.
The audit catches thieves, and the, the bookkeeper, like Brett Shepherd, we had Terry Harper, we had Boucher Association.
All right, then, answer this for me now.
They, they account for...
If you go out there and cut a tree in the park, no meeting on it, and it falls down when somebody cuts it, then you're trying to sell the wood, when, when you get caught, now we got to put it up for bid. All right, where was the meeting, where was the minutes?
If there's a tree coming in...
How come it was cut?
You don't have to have a meeting, you get the darn tree down, you don't have to have a meeting.
Oh, we can just go, I can go cut a tree down then, right?
No, you can't, not on private property.
Oh, I can't? The board can, huh? Without a meeting?
If it's, if it's endangering, you don't have forty-eight hours to call a special meeting, if it's in public, if it's creating a public danger...
It wasn't no danger to it.
Well, I don't know, but I'm just giving you...
The only danger was when he cut it, got caught himself, tried himself.
Okay, let me give you an example. Uh, there was a, they said it was a funnel plow or a small tornado that came through the south side of Belmont, it's been maybe, I don't know, five years ago, you remember? You lived here then? There was a tree severely damaged in a park, it was dangerous, there was tree cutters right across the street, and they, they told me about it. They, they called me, I was in Kentucky, I came home, and I said, yes, get it down. And I had every right to do that. I didn't have to call a special meeting and wait forty-eight hours to cut a tree that's falling, and it's going to hurt somebody. Could it have been roped off and waited tw- forty-eight hours? Yes, it would have cost a lot of money to get those tree cutters back in town. We saved the village a lot of money. I got on the phone, I called every board member, they all said, yes, get it down.
Oh, you called them, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, you called them, couldn't have the meeting though, could you?
Couldn't have a meeting, we couldn't wait forty-eight hours.
But you called.
Absolutely, I did.
All right, that's how we're doing the meetings now, calling everybody?
No, that's what I did that day in a state of emergency, yes.
In an emergency, so you couldn't call a board meeting?
You have to give a forty-eight hour notice to call a board meeting, we did not have forty-eight hours, we had a tree that needed down now. Now, that's just the instance that I took part in, I don't know what you're talking about.
See, that's, that's that tree up there, it wasn't hurting a thing, but it got cut, it could have been a board meeting.
It really was, it was starting to go bad, but it wasn't no danger.
Yeah.
But it was...
It was, so it was just like the situation where there was an opportunity to get it down, get it out of there, and be done with it, or...
He just went down to the bottom of it and chopped it down, and it made a big old place in that basketball court, that broke my heart. Because I wanted to put the glow in the dark paint up there and have it nice. I don't know, I can't go back up there and look at it.
Today, anytime you have taxpayer money involved, you have to have a meeting.
I wish they would pass that ordinance, because all those trees are getting old and dying, and we're not going to have any trees to grow up and replace it for your great-grandchildren and, you know, all that, and his and the theirs and...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Huge.
Take one down, plant one.
I think what we get frustrated is with, we come and we ask the same things every time, and we don't seem like we get any answers.
Well, I know one thing, with the burning and the moving violations, the vehicle and the moving violations, this is how it was put to us, through our attorneys. Anytime there was a moving ordinance violation, like parking across the sidewalk, uh, doing a speed limit, doing, um, oh, what's another example? A, a weight moment, the sheriff asked us to, if he would handle that, if he were asked us if he could handle that, he didn't want us to, he wanted to be the one to handle that. And the fire marshal wants to, he wants to handle the fire, they don't want the village ordinance to, and we're all agreed with that, and that's how it was wrapped up.
The fire marshal?
Mm-hmm.
That's who I need to contact.
That's how it was, you know, a year ago. I don't know how to change.
I need to make a motion to reopen the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
A second? Martha? Leon?
Here.
And Jonathan? Look absent.
Here.
Stacy?
Sorry. My glasses off, I can't see you.
Okay. I've got my notes here there that we're going to continue on and, um, go ahead and, um, follow through with closed session.
Vote.
Um... Let's see, the first one is, uh, salary of employee.
I'll make a motion to vote.
Okay. You want to state the terms of what we're voting about there?
We're voting, uh, if we're going to give Bill a raise or not, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we're wanting to give him a dollar raise, that'll run till December of this year, right?
Yes, because minimum wage will go up in January, so that way...
And so, I mean, that doesn't mean that we're going to turn around and give him another raise in December or January, it's going to be going to that anyway, so...
Yeah.
That's, okay, I see. Okay.
I need a, I need a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion.
Stacy first?
I'll second.
Um, Leon?
Yes.
Yeah, your name?
Yes.
Linda, yes. Paul? Jonathan absent. Okay, and then also we had, I keep fogging. Um, we had, uh, looked at, um, closed session minutes review, so the next part there was motion to ma- maintain confidentiality or, uh, no longer require confidentiality. So...
I need to, do I need to?
Yeah, so, um, first we need to know which way we'd like to go, and then make a first and a second for that. Confident, to remain confidential, those minutes, or to release them. They do, they still do require eighteen months.
Right, I need a motion for that, please.
I will first to, um, motion to keep those in, um, con-...
Confidentiality.
Thank you. Um, so I need a second.
I'll need a second, I'll need all second.
And then, um, Martha?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yay.
And then John, who would be absent. And Paul Van Meter? Who would be absent. Okay, so those will still stay confidential, okay? Let's see where we're at now, back up here. Uh, back up to motor fuel tax information, we had discussed that last week, that was something that, um, I had discussed, um, was still, did anyone come up with any more ideas? I gave you paperwork to review for the rebuild grant, does anybody have anything new? We talked about, uh, possibly purchasing an abandoned house, we talked about sidewalks, bondable, undondable, nothing new yet there?
I can say something about the roads.
Okay, yes, sir.
Angie has a list of the roads that we participate, that we anticipate chipping ceiling, and I haven't heard anything back from her, she was going to get back to us.
Oh, so, um...
And then, we know how much money we got, then we can X off what we don't want to do or can't do, then we got to ask Effingham, of course, for permission to use the motor fuel tax.
So Leon, you're saying you had already, you've submitted the letter to end it on roads?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
She says it's kind of early, I said it is early, but I don't want to end up like we did last year.
Yes, sir.
At the end of summer, beginning of fall, I said I want to get on it. At the end of summer, beginning of fall, I said I want to get on it quick as I can.
Yeah, I appreciate you stating on that, it's like we said last month, it's, it's gonna take a couple of years to undo the damage that was done three years ago when they did us so late. Okay, um. Does anyone have anything to say about the lawsuit? It's, it's on here again and I'm not even sure. Does everybody understand what to post?
Was it on there because of the uh paper missing off the board?
Perhaps so, um. This was a copy for Belmont Town Hall that was to be left here and then there was to be one put on the board outside. Um I don't know if it did not get put on the board or if it got removed from the board. Um I do, I, I um people are not allowed to take things off that board randomly um and they cannot just place things randomly, they have to ask what they can put on the board and then they cannot remove. Uh if it's something that, that someone is advertising something, they usually have a little tag where they can take just a little piece of paper with a phone number to contact someone, but we're not to be removing that, just the owners themselves. Um so um let's try to get this back on the board so people can realize what it is, those that's still having questions. Actually, I, I did have a couple of folks that addressed it with me, wanting to know what this was all about. And the best I could tell them that it had been dismissed, but unfortunately it did cost us. So, that's that. That's a bad phrase, I apologize.
So I need to have Bill put another one on the board.
Yes, please. Um this treasure update with Wattler, it said vote, that is a-